Thank you all for being here tonight for our regular council meeting on September 8th, 2016. Mr. Manning, would you mind leading us in our vacation and place to the flag for everyone to please state?
Good morning. I hear your Father will be coming today morning. Thank you. Another beautiful day morning. Thanks for each one who come after this prayer morning. God, we just had to watch over me and the light. Earn the service, follow, watch over all those whose head has been affected by the comfort of their body. They was to make their right choice from that decision this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge the flag to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We can have the roll call, please.
Mayor Lambert.
Here.
Vice Mayor Grabett.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
City Mayor Gerald.
Here.
City Commissioner.
I trust everyone has had opportunity to review the minutes in the consent agenda. Those would be the minutes from the April 25th Agenda Work Session as well as the August 25th Regular Council Meeting. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stone.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes. Alright, at this time we will entertain communication from citizens. If we have anyone who's who signed in, apparently do have one. We'll go through my regular spiel. If you're a citizen or business owner here in the city of East Ridge, if you have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so. Come to one of the microphones here at the front, state your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes. And the one person that we've had sign in is Mr. John Temple, 3938 South Mission Oaks Drive. Go ahead and forward, Mr. Temple.
Thank you, Mayor Lambert, and commissioners and other dignitaries. I'm here to tell all of you about the East Ridge Jones Memorial Barbecue, annual barbecue. We've had it for 41 years, constant. And what we do, the money we make, we cook the barbecue, sell them. And the money we make, the profit we make, is set aside for the young people, mostly elementary school children, to buy winter coats because come December, it's gonna get pretty cool. Typically, last year we raised about $17,000 and had about 700, that was profit, 7,000 that was profit. So we bought 170 coats, long sleeve jackets for the elementary schools and we would, members of our team, they go to the schools and talk to the principals and find out how many they need and what size and what color. So by late November, early December, they got them and they take them to the school and so forth. So when you come and eat with us, you're gonna help cover, get a nice warm coat for a young child. And it's really, makes you feel good to do that. The things that we sell, what we call the plate, it's barbecue and two side items, like beans and slaw or whatever, cereal you can pick from, drink and bread, and that's $8 a person. Then just an extra large sandwich is $5. So if you have some teenagers or young people, you can probably buy one sandwich and split it, and it's just $5 to hold. We also sell it, we have people that wanna buy the barbecue by the pound and put it in the freezer and save it till November, December, Thanksgiving, all of that. So that's $10 a pound. It's in a little, separate little cart down in front there. So I just wanted to make sure the commissioners have been regular guests and helped us buy some coats. We'd like to invite you again this year. We'll have a table set up for you if you can let us know. And Jackie, I know him real well, and so I can communicate with anybody that, you know, you wanna use. But last year, he took it blow by the horns and got it through the process. But are there any questions about Jones Memorial or the barbecue?
What would you make?
Yes, sir.
Last week we needed up that 40 tickets for the city, so I might have motion signed this year. I'll send the benefit to them.
I'll say. We have a motion and a second to buy 40 tickets on behalf of the city of East Ridge. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stone.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Remind us all of the date again.
Thank you, pardon.
Remind us all of the date.
I'm sorry, 24th of September. It's always in September. And it's two weeks from this Saturday, this coming Saturday. So you've got two weeks and two days to getting out there.
What time?
It's, what time? The times, it opens at 10:00, 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, closes at 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, same day. The good, a bit of advice, it's better to come earlier, like 11:00 or 12:00 or 1:00. Because last year we had, I think it was last year, we had, we ran out of some items at about 3:00, 4:00. We didn't have any chicken anymore. It was all long purchased, eaten. So you were down to beef and pork. Somebody that was looking to buy some chicken didn't have a chance that late, you know. So don't wait too long or chicken run off. Yeah.
And the barbecue seems to always be on Tennessee, Florida Football Day. So I console myself, for the last 11 years, I've consulted myself with Jones Memorial Barbecue with the inevitable defeat.
We got a big TV, real big TV, and sat it up on stage and turned it on. And everybody wanting to, got to watch Tennessee game and some other games. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
One thing about it, anybody don't need the barbecue to miss the good thing, 'cause it's real good.
Just call them in.
I meet every year, real good barbecue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, do we have anyone who was not able to sign in? Yes, sir.
Just a brief announcement. Candidates forum is scheduled for October 17th, Monday, in this very room. Just wanna inform the council of that and all people in attendance, especially those people in our political animals, and I'm sure that would be a lot to attend to. It's scheduled for 17:00. Dr. Rick Wilson, professor of UT City, is gonna be in the morning. For everyone's information, I am listening questions through East Ridge News Online readers. Those questions will be gathered, accumulated. I'm in the process of forming a committee which will review the questions from the readers. There will be no names attached to the questions. The committee will review those questions and select perhaps a dozen or more, which will be in, you know, a wide array, but in categories. I'm sure we can all probably anticipate what some of those questions might be. And then those questions will be turned over to Dr. Wilson prior to the event, and he will be selecting the questions. So I hope everyone can make it. I anticipate, for the time being, might be an overflow crowd.
What time?
7:00 p.m. I figure that's time enough for everybody to get home and have dinner and then make plans to come. And Monday, October 17th.
That is correct.
At 7:00 p.m.
Right here.
Right, right. I have coordinated with Trish Carey that day. I have advised four of the seven candidates of that day. I've reached out to three others and I haven't heard back, but I figure they may be in attendance tonight, so this is their invitation to attend. October 17th, Monday at 7:00 p.m. And I appreciate the council allowing us to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dick, I'm sorry, could you give us your address for the ring call?
607 Marl Variety, Richard E. Cook Jr.
Alright, do we have another? Alright, this time we'll go to Communication Council. Mr. Manning. Okay, Mr. Stone.
I'd like to point the street department at City Mayor for a wee iPhone call about the Ringo Road. Look at the kind of poor grass over there, pretty high places there. They got out there, I think they're still working on that, I saw them out there. They're not gonna have us know what better than shit.
Mr. Rippe.
Yeah, speaking of, this is a segue to Councilman Stone's comments. Is the community service program, is it still going on? And if so, how are those community service personnel, what type of jobs do they do?
Custodial. Custodial, I'm not sure how many on the labor side would speak to him. Are you using any, stop any?
Yes, we've loved it. We've had one man that owned his own lawn care service, and he owed a whole bunch, so we kept getting him back, and he was a great benefit to us. And we could use some right now. No, we have really enjoyed it. It's worked well. We've had no problems out of anybody, and it's been a good situation for us.
Thank you, Custodial, for some of our buildings here for one. Thanks. Mr. Cagle.
I'd like to remind the Fire Department, public chiefs, fire chiefs, to remind our employees about the thing we're doing Tuesday. Starts at 11:00, 9:00 Monday, will be done on that Thursday.
I've got a couple of things. One, East Ridge Methodist on Prater Road. They're doing a special service Sunday morning. They will honor first responders, specifically our fire police departments. At that time, I'll be working. We have a festival at the museum this weekend, so I'll be there selling calendar or something. But anyway, that is, that's going to be happening Sunday morning, and then... What time is it? It's, it's, seems like it's 10:30, but don't hold me to that. We'll get, we'll get the exact time. It'll be essentially the regular Sunday morning worship service. So I want to remind everyone of that. Speaking of a little maintenance issue, I was going down Sanctuary Road today, right where, right if you turn off of Ringo Road on Sanctuary, there's a little sign there that says East Ridge City Limits. Looks like, I don't know what's having to do with it, it's just old or what, the paint is blistered on it and you can barely read it. So if we could replace that, that'd be ideal. I've noticed several of the similar signs that are on the blue background look really nice all over the city, and so that would be, if we could get new one there, it'd be great. Alright, that's all I have. Mr. Gillett? Okay. Mr. Gillett, you have anything? Alright, with that, we will proceed to whole business. And item A will be a public hearing for ordinance number 1015. Al, you would like to read the caption of that?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, permitting tower assets new code 9 LLC, Tower Ventures, to construct a cellular communications tower in 4320 Minute Road, in accordance with ordinance 481 R7, Section 113, titled "Usages," permitted only to the Colonel Second Final.
Make a motion to approve. Yeah, we've gotta do the public hearing real quick. Again, this is in regards to the cell tower being proposed for the grounds of East Ridge High School. And having been properly advertised, we'll open this public hearing. And I believe someone from Tower Ventures, is that correct?
Blue cats from in here representing Tower Ventures, 4000, this county avenue, Memphis, Tennessee.
Alright, does any member of council have a question?
I think before we vote on ordinance 1015, there's a name junior, did you correct? Concerning the City Council has conducted a public hearing, though obviously left of 26th day, that public hearing did not hail to that title. Do you have a chance to add to your days?
Yes, sir. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll open it up to all those in attendance. Does anyone have a comment or question in regard to this particular project? I see none. Do you have anything you would like to say?
I think we've covered most of it. I would just appreciate your yes vote on the side. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That will conclude our public hearing for ordinance number 1015. At this time, we will move to item B, which is consideration of that ordinance on second and final reading. First reading took place on August 11th. Would the public hearing taking place tonight in second reading as well? Does anyone need the caption read again? Okay, then we will entertain motion.
I'd like to motion to approve. Ament as amended.
Admitted. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stone.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, ordinance number 1016.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, replacing ordinance number 867, amending Title 20 relative to the timing and placement of level signs on city and private property. The City of East Ridge, here on second and final.
I'd like to motion, make a motion. After discussion.
We can, can we make a motion to approve, approve? Second. Have a second. Now we can discuss, hit the work of potentially amend ordinance before second and final.
One thing that I'm, just kinda looking at the side we've got now, that's a blue mistake, people wrong. I mean, the majority of the orders placed there, I mean, are too close the way we got it set. And it looked like, just everybody wanted to look what it looked like. I'm thinking, all these little signs, after looking at it, you took the little signs, I know it's five, five feet, you took the little signs that go from the white line of the highway instead of the asphalt. Some of those places, there's 10, 15 foot between the white line. And you're gonna be so far out there, you're not even, there's no such a thing out there, it's stolen. And that's not a law case, there's gonna be some side roads you don't have. You don't have a white line, you just got a curb. But that's, if that's on private property, that's a pretty hard one to do about it anyway. So I mean, that's the only thing that I see that I think we should, should shake to look at. If not, then you're gonna have a change of life, that's why.
But it's a safety issue.
Well, I, yeah, I'm just gonna say, the small sign is really not a problem. Get to your bigger size, and I think we've had some issues with that, those markets have to care of. That is far from a small signs. And I think everybody's willing to fall, you know, try to put the signs up where they're not blocking traffic. I've read it three different times, and I, like I put one up that I had to move, like we did last year. Me and Tim had to move it. But it was going trying to go by the ordinance at that time. But as far as blocking traffic, I think we had one, Tim and myself had one, that was blocking traffic, so we moved it. I don't know, I mean, with all this going, I don't think, don't know this thing, except for the next election. Instead of this one, because everybody's sign is already up. Move that little small sign, ordinance. White line on the highway, basically, I mean, if you go down to the highway, you'll see that some places you've got, you've got 10, 15 foot, and then you've got a road, I mean, you know, this asphalt. The way the ordinance reads, it's from the asphalt, five feet from there. If you went by the white line, and as long as you wouldn't, you know, this building, I guess that design.
Yes, sir. I mean, as everyone knows, I mean, I've got signs up there, up out there right now, too. I agree with the changes that you're wanting to propose. The problem I see with doing it right now is that everyone's already got a copy of the ordinance. So it's, it would be kind of difficult to change it literally in midstream, in the middle of an election period. So like you said, I think it needs to be for the next election. But yeah, I agree with what you're saying. Do you wanna table it and get those changes in writing and come back next council meeting? That way it's already set and, you know.
What can we amend what we got with that small sign? Tonight, we may have, we just might get five foot from the white line.
You'd be looking at, you'd be looking at Section 20-4031 and 2.
We may have, but I hadn't really looked, law picks, I mean, I know there's some that were.
You have a blocking view.
I think that's actually here.
I'm sorry, what, what number did you say? 20-4031 and 2.
I don't know who's talking about, it's already been handed out. All of them, but the signs are, you're out, out of ordinance, they're gonna fill that loop. I'm gonna say we went from the white line down, probably that loop, loop.
When you say the white line?
White line on the middle of the road, on the side road.
So you're talking about major materials only at the white line, most, most of it's still white.
That's what I'm saying, the side roads, when the signs are, they're mostly black. But y'all getting into somebody's yard.
And it's small so, sorry, blocking traffic, big block.
Others doesn't got their signs out, and I agree with him. Because they don't got their signs out, both sides, long gate blocking view, the traffic. I don't see a problem with them, I think they're, just living like they are.
You don't have to worry about the signs at the intersections because we have a site triangle, you know, our sign ordinance. So those, any sign that's placed within that site triangle, intersection, hinders visibility, then that's a public safety, you'd have to do something about it.
Yes, sir. That's what you just said, long gate blocking.
That doesn't necessarily, that language doesn't have to be included here. It's already in our zoning ordinance for signs within that site triangle.
Yes, sir. And in the case of that, you just go out and table down, it makes a little occasion, I think, of that, or try to call somebody.
We would call them first. Most of the people have been very responsive. We only had, to be honest, we've only had one that I'm aware of. That hasn't been definitely a site triangle problem.
I agree with, a couple of the statements have been made in regard to the difficulty of changing midstream. I think it would, for those people who may be, who may be running for state office or county office or what they are, they, they may be attempting to abide by what they receive from the Election Commission, which if we go back and change it right now, won't match what was distributed to them by the Election Commission. So I think for this election, we, we'd probably stick with what we've got. And in the current ordinance and, you know, come, come back and revisit the distance issues shortly after the election.
Yeah, of course. Some, mayor, we go up a lot, once it's, that's not compliant, which is Georgia. We can't follow.
It was gonna have to enforce what was handed out by our Election Commission. God, that was handed out there, but it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be handed out there.
Theoretically, it was handed out to everyone.
Right. Well, that's what we've got to go by.
Right, I agree.
That's what we've got to enforce.
And there's an extra plus factor, aspect of this, and the problem is, as you say, the horse is already out of the barn. And a lot of people have, in reliance on what they understood to be the current regulation, they have established the signs. I'd hate to enforce something that the council adopted after they're going to put the sign out, and they were initially compliant.
Well, that's a problem with some of the laws.
Well, the ones that aren't, then that's a different story. The ones that would become noncompliant because of what y'all did tonight.
Can we just vote, like we said, right now?
Well, we can.
We can vote on what was handed out, it's already on record, that everybody got a copy of it, and then enforce that in between now. Whatever the deadline is, they give us to hand them something to hand out, whether it's one we can have this one, like we want.
Where we all can change the ordinance to modify the effective date, so, say, if you're, you can deal with it for the next election.
You know, I think part of the, part of the thinking, you know, I was, I was on the council when this was first adopted back in '09. And part of my thinking was, the five feet off of the street would mainly apply, you think about it, it mainly applies to Ringo Road. And so it's a way of reducing clutter. And most of the time, if you've got a sign that's in someone's yard, you're gonna be able to get it five feet off the street. But, you know, sometimes we have signs wedged in all sorts of places, all up and down Ringo Road, and it's unsightly. It's, a lot of them run down the place.
You have a car going up, pipe, bricks, brooms on the right-hand side. You're gonna have to be a bit of a, if you find a good, that'd be a good sign, but it all got everywhere, it's a ditch and a hill.
So I do think this is, as far as changing, what is it, the current ordinance in terms of distances and all the rest? of distances and all the rest, you know, I, I would certainly be willing to, you know, have a meeting, a workshop, whatever we need to do after the election, and change it to whatever we want it to be, whenever we want.
Next election.
But what we've got right now, as Jacky said a few minutes ago, but we've got it, which, what's, what's here now. But we do have, uh, we do have also the, uh, language regarding the, uh, lottery for we're choosing tents, on city property.
I just got a copy of that today, so I'd like to hang that in the workshop and stuff that we did.
I, I received the email today, and I, I read it today. I'd like to just go ahead and, and vote on it, approve. And, and one thing about this particular issue is this doesn't affect something that's already been done, like the same, changing the sign, distances and all the rest is, what was the, what was the legal terminology to use back in the day?
Yeah, well, a lot of these signs, Mary, too, won't you cover the ground, the way they put that water together, which you don't have, and you've got to push it back down again, the water's breaking, something else, so, water that too swiftly. I like, I like, I play the, 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 the.
Not all county, state official, but they have these, so they probably won't know about the lottery.
They just don't know that.
There's most, most of the state officials, him being one of them, and the other one being Senator Gardenhire, that's the only two state officials that represent East Ridge. And Senator Gardenhire, I don't want to speak for him, but I don't really think he's going to put up a tent up here. I can certainly text him right now, ask him, but Congressman Fleishman, I don't, he's never put it in.
He put that some, Fleishman.
He's never put it in.
He ended up putting, no.
He's never put it in, so, um, you know, Mr. Mayor, I, I'd like to just go ahead and make a motion to approve these, these lottery rules for placements of tents. Okay, so we, we have a motion in a second to adopt.
May.
If you go back and look at the ordinance here, ten sixteen.
At the last regular city commission, council meeting, council passed that this is just some ideas that were drafted via caucus, but at the last council meeting, council members said, on discuss these rules, the function, which was at this meeting.
Yeah, right.
So, nobody out there in the audience, or, no, this is, matter of fact, this is, this is just ideas that were generated from what the council said at the last council meeting.
Well, I will withdraw my original motion, however, I will make the motion to include these lottery rules on the next scheduled council meeting.
Welcome to the late sign, right?
Okay, Mayor, I apologize. I withdraw my second. Clear. No, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, we're actually talking about two different issues. Talking about the signs, but then we're talking about the lottery, as well, so. Let's back it for a minute, we had a motion in a second to approve ordinance ten sixteen. Yes. And then, you, you made a motion to adopt the lottery rules, which I was going to say, we could do that as an amendment to the ordinance, but if you want to withdraw that, we can do that. Now, you can withdraw? I will withdraw. Okay, the amendment, and so, we're still, we're back at now to, we have a motion in a second for ordinance ten sixteen. Okay, do we have any other comments or questions?
Okay, so we're going to lay the sign in two weeks.
Yes, sir.
Since I'm late, no, she's not due in half a second.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, section twenty dash four oh two, item number three, talking about the lottery rules and regulations.
Yes, sir.
Are to be determined, but we haven't determined for years, so, it's our code. So, uh, we need to decide what they're going to be before we ever.
Well, Mr. Grab, just, we're probably here just to, on about the lottery. Am I right on that, Mr. Grab?
Yeah, we're not discussing the lottery.
No, it's the signs.
But, now, the, the language in, in this ordinance.
Had been determined, if the lottery had been approved, if it's city, so, uh, who are we going to be, what is the workshop or something, they're going to have to manage?
Well, simply, as it is, we have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance ten sixteen. In that ordinance is the language, a lottery is to be conducted to determine the locations of a candidate's tents on city property designated as the official poll location. The rules of the lottery are to be determined and approved by the city council. Now, if, if this council never adopts any rules, it's going to be the way it's always been.
Yeah.
So we have between now and a week prior to election day to determine what those rules are.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's where we're at on that particular issue.
Okay, just go back to the next, do you have a, Mark?
The lottery, yeah, I made, well, I made a motion to, or did I make a motion, or did I make a request? I made a request to have it added to the next council meeting. So, what, we, we don't, we need to vote on ten sixteen. Right. Right, ten sixteen creates the lottery.
Yes.
Does not create the rules for the lottery.
Correct.
The rules have to be determined by us at some point between now and the week prior to election day.
Okay, can we take the lottery out of this, and just vote on the sign ten sixteen, and take the lock out now, and just vote on the sign?
It can, you would have to.
Just cut that, we can discuss it.
You would have to make a, you would have to propose an amendment to the current motion that would strip item three from twenty dash four oh two.
Okay. I make the motion to strip, or the dash what?
Uh, twenty dash four oh two, item three.
Make the motion to strip that out.
This would be an amendment to the moment, the motion to adopt ordinance number ten sixteen.
Without the lottery.
We would need a second in order to vote on that amendment.
Again, what you're wanting is take out any reference to lottery whatsoever, not the rules, or just.
Just the lottery.
Yes. Do we have a second? Okay, you're done, so if, if the proposal that it does for like a second.
No, we're going to pull the lottery.
The motion that is in front of us now is to approve the ordinance with that language in it that creates the lottery, but not the rules for the lottery. Right? Okay, do we have any other questions, comments?
Okay, oh, Tom, I forgot, Mr. Evans, which, oh, he's motion about the lottery.
He, he withdrew his motion to adopt these specific rules for the lottery.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, I apologize.
Rules are going to come, rules will come back, September twenty second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance ten sixteen, as appears in our packets. Ted, if we could have a roll call, please.
House Mayor Rabbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagel?
No.
Councilmember Manning?
No.
Councilmember Stoll?
Yes.
Mayor Lindbergh?
Yes. Item is approved, we're going to do business, item A, ordinance number ten seventeen.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, made the title nine, chapter five, regulating towing services, by deleting the present chapter five in its entirety, and substituting a new chapter five, regulating towing services, here on first group.
Make the motion approve.
Mr. Mayor.
We, we do have a motion to approve, can we get a second for discussion? I'll second for discussion. Okay, we have a second for discussion? Yes, sir. Uh, question, the city attorney, does this current, does the ordinance where you're wanting to vote on tonight, you make references to a couple of Supreme Court cases, uh, in uh, US Supreme Court, and also in state, in the city Supreme Court, does this ordinance as written keep us legal in regards to those, those programs?
Well, I'm going to say it this way, the question will be whether the restrictions of, for example, the list comprising the double, comprising the one and three towing companies, whether that is, affects a public purpose such as safety for the city of East Ridge and its citizens, and is not simply a pretext to run an audition. So, that's therein lies the rub, as I mentioned the last time. Anything and everything done with regard to this ordinance must be with the purpose of public safety in mind, and cannot limit to competition, but safety and public purpose and protection of the citizens.
Good.
So, that's about as laid as I can be, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm looking here at district rec, we district director here, and unless it's mentioned somewhere else, I don't see anything where it states about, must be a business for a certain number of years, or something like that, unless it is in some other.
It's, uh, I've got the language that I have proposed under section nine dash five oh six, it would be eleven, it would be a new eleven, which would read information show that the applicant has been in a record business, as a record operator in the city of East Ridge, who appeared in three years.
Can we add this packet, does she get, right, James?
So that language, yeah, three years could be changed, one, two, three, four, five.
So it's not being one in the book? Because I don't see that as.
No, it's not.
Okay.
They've been, three were actually mentioned, and I, and I go with, three, they had been in business for three years with the building, and that's, go by all the code of the city of East Ridge, that's how much you may pay.
Nine dash five oh six, I'm sorry, uh, city manager, what number?
Nine dash. It would be a new number eleven.
Mark, if you go back to the, in the work session packet?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, if you look. It's actually, it's actually the, the, the.
Okay, it's the, uh, fourth page.
Our, since in the city of East Ridge right now, we only actually have four people that do the towing, as inside the city, for a person to be, to get put on the district record. So for this item, you section five oh six eleven, where we're not denying you by even representing district, a daily fitting service for three years, then after ten, three years, then they can apply to our district record, the way I remember this, so we're not actually demanding you do three, just three, but we only have four feet under down, and that would go on up, so that's really why we've got three. Now, this one, this one, line eleven is one of, anybody else wants to come out here and open business, stay in business for three years, then they have the right to apply for a district record, which we do not have in front of state, but cannot, it cannot be refused, so.
Right, with the, with the language here, and what's being proposed in the, the new section, nine dash five oh six eleven, a, another business from outside the city of East Ridge can't move in here and begin operating. There's no prohibition on the operation of a record service, they just can't get on the district rotation until they've been here three years. You know, um, I, that'd be, you know.
When I go back to the inspector.
Right. And, and, I mean, that's just like in my profession, you know, you got to be, you got to be licensed for two years in apprenticeship before you can be full of license, so, I kind of equate that to this as well, um, you know, for at least, you know, three years in, in business, in good standing in the community.
And then you have to have a bill here, also.
Okay.
So, with that, uh, that, that the safety issue, there are, are.
Well, you'd have to equate the safety issue, in other words, it would be safer and protect the citizens more, for example, uh, if you required somebody to try to get on the district list, to have been established in East Ridge for three years, and the question is, like comes in, they've been established and chatted here for twenty years, is it a safety consideration to make them jump through a three-year hoop in East Ridge, when they've been operating otherwise, and can you relate that to public safety? Maybe, and I, and I ask, Mr. Miller, what I was implying about last time was a limit, I understood, of, of list three on the district record, has that now been deleted? That there's a maximum of no more than three, as I recall.
I don't believe that's.
Okay, as long as that language is caught in, that's.
Matter of fact, this language would allow, if anybody, we have four right now, if that fourth one decided that they wanted to be on the record, they can apply for that.
As long as they've been operating in the city of East Ridge for three.
No, that, this one I understand has been, but anybody else, anybody else coming in from outside the city?
He been here, I thought, I was, where he been here now, about thirty years, I talked to him the other day, he said, not right now, all he does is just, he just roll back and go pick his cards and write it down, but he does not have a record, but he said about nine, not, in right now, but if he did, then he would come to us, tell, talk to us about it.
I, I would suggest it would be more, uh, better, well, I would say it's less constitutionally suspect, for example, if the requirement was that the operator wanted to come in and operate it three years, period, not necessarily three years in East Ridge. But again, that's something for the council, and you're going to have to, at some point in time, like we have to do with fireworks laws, you're going to have to justify the protection.
This, the language as proposed says, in a record business, as a record operator in some case city of East Ridge, period, okay.
I would, and speaking just for me, I, I see, I certainly see what you're saying, Mr. North. In my mind, I would equate this provision with a safety measure. We want to make sure they're, they're ready to hold.
Um, yeah.
And, and so, it, it, you may absolutely be right, this may ultimately be something that we have to, have to defend in court, but I, I think, I'm comfortable with that provision.
I am too, because we are not paying any, for it. Reason for it being free, because it's, either down or up.
I need that motion.
Well, we have a motion in a second to approve.
With that further.
Ordinance ten seventeen. Ordinance ten seventeen.
Yes, it was a little added to.
Right. So we need to, you either need to withdraw the motion in a second and create a new motion.
I did, I made my motion add that to.
Well, there's, there's two ways we can do it.
Okay. I'll withdraw my motion then.
All right. Who's second?
I would, I would, thank you.
Okay. So start fresh. Okay. Now, would someone like to make a motion regarding ordinance ten seventeen in the addition of the new section?
All right. I'd like to make the motion regarding, add on to it, ten seventeen, right?
Yeah. Adopt ordinance ten seventeen.
Adopt ordinance ten seventeen to this, that'd be my motion, or.
Okay. With the, the new section.
Yes, sir.
That is nine dash five oh six eleven. And by adding that section, we do need to change a little bit of the wording in nine dash five oh six nine for continuity purposes.
I might want to do that maybe.
Okay. So that's all rolled into Mr. Manning's motion to approve ordinance number ten seventeen. This is first, this is first reading, so we have two weeks to think more on it.
They have to have a, we all have a right to service, sir.
Well, they, it says, the language says, they have to have, being in business, operating in the city of East Ridge for a period of three years, so.
But I didn't want, college, how do, law school, somebody say, well, you said have the three years, and I want to make sure we, but they know, have, have big, sir, have three years.
And certainly that wording could be clarified further as well.
I'd like for it to be gained, too.
Right. They have to have a physical location in the city of East Ridge.
Three years.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve ordinance ten seventeen with the changes suggested, which would be the addition of section nine dash five oh six eleven, changing the wording then in section nine dash five oh six nine, and further that nine dash five oh six eleven state that the operator must have a physical location in the city of East Ridge.
Yes, sir.
Let me clarify a case, so I'm, uh.
Yes, sir.
It looks like, and I was referring, when I talked last week, I would refer to the provision under section nine five oh six, the last paragraph. Thus otherwise determined by the city council, a number of District Record operators permitted by the city shall be no more than three per class. Looks like that has now been deleted from current, this week's section. Is that your understanding, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right.
My correct, uh, it's, it's been out?
Yes, sir.
It's all good. Any questions?
So that was the issue, that was the problem that I raised the last time, we limited to a, arbitrarily limited to a number, you know, without significant safety concern.
Okay. So we have the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's our second. Any comments, questions? Again, this is first reading, so it'll have to be back before it's for second reading next time, it's on the, on the agenda for next second. Roll call, please.
House Speaker Graban.
Yes.
Councilmember Cable.
Yes.
Councilmember Maney.
Yes.
Councilmember Stole.
Yes.
Fairland.
Yes.
Motion approved. Ordinance number ten eighteen, item B. Like a little ketchup.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, pending ordinance number ten thirteen entitled, an ordinance to provide revenue for the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, fiscal year July first, two thousand sixteen to June thirty, two thousand seventeen, appropriating the same to the payment of expenses of the municipal government by changing the revenues of the grant fund and drug fund and by changing the expenditures of the grant fund and the drug fund. You're on first read.
We have a motion.
Second.
Look, I'm sorry, I may not, I may not, I may not say that clearly.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. You may not have heard the, the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. May have been a little too far from the mark, but. Okay. So we have a motion in a second to approve ordinance ten eighteen. Have any questions? Do you have any, any question there? Other than what's, what's here, blank one. Roll call, please.
House Speaker Graban.
Yes.
Councilmember Cable.
Yes.
Councilmember Maney.
Yes.
Councilmember Stole.
Yes.
Fairland.
Motion approved. Item C, ordinance ten nineteen.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, pending title eleven, municipal offices, chapter three, offices against the peace and quiet, section eleven dash three oh two, grant one, grant eight, building operations by deleting section eleven thirty-two, one eight in its entirety and creating a new section eleven three oh two, one eight. You're on first read.
Make a motion, please.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. What's the question?
Did we get any other, applying about this, like the price, the price, the, the?
Uh, yeah, I got one, I got one email from a resident. That's all and what I got.
Can I, uh, we have a question, uh, is this a thing, thing to, uh, say for July fourth, for what about our bill today?
I don't know that I can answer that question.
Systems will do it work on you, lucky, warm days, labor day, do what, do what, you know, shrug something in the backyard, like, all right.
And unless, unless, this is, this is reported to you, uh, yes, uh, unless you have approval from the building inspector.
But you could, but you could get approval from the building inspector.
Yes. No. It says in here, uh, let's see, if the building officials should determine that the public health and safety will not be impaired by the outdoor erection, demolition, alteration of a building between hours of six P M and seven A M, then we shall further determine the loss rate and convenience result to any party in interest in delay, can make grant permission for such outdoor work to be done between hours of six P M and seven A M. I have to, if we make a final permit, the word is reported, pretty much, one of those lines of, yes, there is, and that could basically be for an immediate construction project. You could have a construction project going on, there's no residential around it at all, and therefore they could get, and come in and ask for wait.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Miller, let me mention, we, my office, in fact, Mr. Vay and I had revised this yesterday or the day before, and, for example, the first sentence, it says, the outdoor erection, we had changed that language because we were concerned, for example, if you're framing, somebody's framing something technically, that they're working inside, because that's not, um, outdoor erection, that's technically indoor, so we changed that.
Okay.
And we had sent that on, um, to. So then we can su- consider that.
It's in here. It's in this time.
Any other, any other changes?
Yeah, there's yellow highlights here. Change, the list labor day is only changed in this case, that's not significant. What we changed is, it should, should read the erection, excavation, demolition, exterior alteration, or exterior repair of any building in any residential area or section. Because frankly, I don't believe you're making a repair to the interior of a home, I don't think you have the same considerations as you do to somebody, you know, knocking the brick out of the exterior of the house. That's why we changed that, among other reasons.
No, or what you're saying, inside house, okay?
Yeah, you come in and you're, uh, making a repair to the insides of your house, you're not worried about, you're not the same sound considerations you have in somebody knocking out a brick on the exterior of your house.
That'll probably.
That's what we asked the council to consider, well.
It appears that it tidies, it tidies it up, but it doesn't really change the, the intent of the, of the, of the, just of, of the changes that we're making.
Mr. Mayor, do we have to change this for the inside, or can we just go on the outside?
Well, I would, again, I think we, if we back and do probably what we did before, we could have a withdrawal of the motion in a second with a new motion in a second to adopt the language as provided in the yellow highlighted version of ordinance ten nineteen, which again, just tidies up some of the language, clarifies, it clarifies the intent, it doesn't change the intent. Frankly, I can't remember who made the motion in a second. Gentlemen, if you would mind, if, if it's, your desire to do so is to withdraw.
I would agree with that.
I would agree with Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion in a second to approve ordinance ten nineteen as provided in the, revised version provided by the city attorney?
Quick motion, please.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
House Speaker Graban.
Yes.
Councilmember Cable.
Yes.
Councilmember Maney.
Yes.
Councilmember Stole.
Yes.
Fairland.
Yes.
Item D, resolution twenty-five P good.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city of East Ridge to participate in a T M L risk management group driver safety loss control matching grant approach.
Make a motion, please.
I'll second a question right here.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve.
Showing us a hundred percent, it says, it's stayed up to fifty-fifty as long as we are paying him through the state, and so, does that become, our driver, our state, Tennessee driver's license, where we are paying the information for the state?
No, sir. A hundred percent means that as long as we're getting the driver's license checks, it doesn't matter where they're from. If you do something else in the program, like, uh, do an education program, or training, or something like that, then the grant becomes fifty-fifty. But if you're just getting your driver's license check, it's a hundred percent, no match. And that's what we intend to do.
So over here in the, uh, resolution, I think it says you're supposed to match any money provided, so.
I think that's probably an error from, we do the, also the T M L loss control, uh, the safety grant, so that's probably left over from that.
So that's section two, if we can get that resolution.
I have no problem with that.
You're correct.
Take it out.
That we agreed to match any money, which is a hundred percent, so.
I mean, section two.
Right. As long as you, as long as we're agreeing to do the driver's license check, so as long as that's what you agree upon, then yes, definitely take that out, but if we weren't, then we would need to leave it in because we have to provide a match.
I'll put my second to make another motion to. Make a motion through the twenty-five eighty-nine, with the exception of section two in this, for limitation.
All right. We have a motion in a second to adopt resolution twenty-five eighty-nine with removal of section two. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
House Speaker Graban.
Yes.
Councilmember Cable.
Yes.
Councilmember Maney.
Yes.
Councilmember Stole.
Yes.
Fairland.
Yes.
Item D, resolution twenty-five ninety.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving a fifth, purchase of one side loading automated refuse collection truck.
Make a motion, please.
Second.
That was, we're taking the, uh.
Second lowest bid.
Taking lowest bid. What, what type did you say?
Get them set back here.
Comments? Yeah, let me, let me basically, we're going with the second lowest bid because the second lowest bid is providing a five-year warranty on four sides of the body, a two-year engine warranty, and a three-year transmission warranty, and also they have a local service department. The lowest bidder does not have a local service department. They only have a two-year or four thousand engine hours warranty on the Honda body, and a two-year, two-year warranty on the engine, there's no warranty on the transmission, because the second lowest bidder was more responsible in their bid, providing this with a greater expansion on the warranty side as well as local representation to be able to fix these vehicles.
Ma'am, I think we got two, two more back here.
Well, it's, unfortunately, this portion of the meeting, they can't, um, do we have a, is, is there a reason?
I think they're.
You all right with it?
Okay.
Okay, they're okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, please.
Okay. I think we have, yeah, we have a motion in a second already.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, please.
Okay. And this would be for. Please, man. At one seventy-three five.
And this is the truck we put in the, okay, there.
Yes, sir. Yes. So I believe, we have, how much is in there, one eight? How much budget for this?
Lead one.
Lead one, so this is under budget. And that money will stay in the reference account.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
House Speaker Graban.
Yes.
Councilmember Cable.
Yes.
Councilmember Maney.
Yes.
Councilmember Stole.
Yes.
Fairland.
Yes.
And the final item, item F, appointment to the library board, Mr. Manning.
A warning from Francis Howell, I have called her, she says she's been late to the job.
Okay.
How did you do it?
Hold on.
You should bet it.
All right. Sorry, I have to remind, we need to, council need to take any action on that.
I, I would, right, I'll back to, 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 the whole fruits, we like to be a nice week on the other.
Right. Yeah, we need to make sure that everybody understands.
Right. I think a, I saw earlier a meeting at the library board, this was called Tuesday night, I believe it is, kind of an organizational meeting, so all of. So, uh, all of, we need to make sure that, I think it's September thirteenth. Is this a full term or an expired term? I guess the, I guess the remainder of, of the term, that, we appointed folks, I think, back in February, something like that, March, maybe, to the library board?
Yes.
Or try, try to, theoretically.
Mine, mine is still, mine is, get down, between that, I can back.
This is basically to, uh, I guess, fill, uh, an unfinished term. Okay, so. Do we? Yeah, I think, I think probably so, to, just to, I hate to, to not do it and come back and find out we, we probably need to, so.
Then I'll make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion in second, roll call, please.
Ms. Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes. Yes. Yes, sir.
All right. I'm making a motion for a long, if they will, for the, of the board.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I didn't call them, you don't call them.
Okay, I've actually got that note here real quick about the library board meeting, go bear with me just a moment. Uh, Brian Smith Mayu, a meeting at the East Ridge Library Board to be held September thirteenth, seven P M, at the library, Dan Powers, the director wants to meet, organize the board. So, in the library, Tuesday, September thirteenth, seven o'clock. All right, that's all we have, just a minute.
Uh, Mr. Miller, can I make a suggestion? Can we have an agenda addendum packet? If something comes up after the book is already bound, rather than having it put on the agenda session packet, because.
Sure.
All I do is look at the adj- agenda session packet, I wouldn't think to look back pages afterward for information on tonight's meeting.
Got you.
So, I think that would be, don't cause less confusion, Jim. Thank you.
You're done.
All right, well, thank you all for being here tonight. This meeting is adjourned.